To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We will call the meeting in order. What's the motion of agenda approval? Everything okay as of present?
Yep.
Okay.
And it's an amended agenda?
Yeah, yep. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Both. Approved. Minutes from the July 13 meeting.
I didn't see anything. I'm making motions.
I'll second Bruce's motion.
Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Both. Minutes approved. Do we have any general public concerns? Hearing and seeing none, I'll make a motion to go into drainage. I'll say that. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Both. We are in drainage.
What's that? Fine. Yeah. Seven.
Morning.
Nice. Oh, John.
Why is it here?
Comes back up.
Did you buy that car, Lori?
Did I buy that?
Dave, I need you to sign this again. Yes. I'm getting copy. The copy is in the map.
Well, I didn't print it. I just signed it. Is that gonna work or do I need to print it also?
Yeah, those things look like this.
Thank you.
You have everything that you need?
Pass that around. You want me to make copies?
Uh, no, we can pass it around.
Okay.
Maybe just the description and the word.
Anyway, it's a...
In drainage to look at. Copy petition for improvement in District Number Seven Sub Two. I'm just trying to get my mind around the district improvement.
In the yellow, yes. Would be the improvement area.
Okay.
And, um, it's in Rutland.
Yellow is the improvement area.
Eighteen and seventeen.
Okay, what is...
The relief tile stopped in the middle of, um, the bottom of the section, that's in blue.
Yeah.
And that was done several years ago.
Okay.
And then...
So, what's in red there is a current private line?
It's an old tile.
But it's at the county main?
Yes.
Oh, it is, okay.
These are all counties along here. And...
So, that's what they're looking at, extending the relief line?
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha.
And using eighteen inch larger, preferably plastic. Is that anything else, Dave, or...
No, it's just the old tile that's there is not big enough and it goes right up the middle of the gravel road.
Up here. That's a good one. Yeah, and it'd be nice to make it out into the, off the road or right away.
See, when they did this, they should've took that tile through to the road. When they did it thirty years ago, they stopped out the middle of the field where we can't get to it. They were hooked on. That's the problem.
You can't get to hook on to that relief tile, is what you're saying?
Right. Not with, uh, you know, not with the Germans that were present us crossing that field. So, we'll just make it a county project. That's what it needs to be anyway, and then anybody becomes part of it, anybody can do anything they wanna do.
Improve or extension?
Gotcha.
Um, the relief tile, I believe.
What's the size down there? What's currently in the ground and what's...
Um...
Say other...
Well, this is a small...
I was gonna say, I get my cheaters on track, 'cause it's...
I don't know.
What's that?
Excuse me?
Well, the one thing that comes across the south side is either a fourteen or a fifteen right now. I'm not sure. 'Cause we have hit it and broke it before.
I think it's like it says fourteen.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. You remember that, um, it's one of those dues items.
Did you hit it or did he?
Hold on, man. He hit it.
He did.
And then the one going up underneath the road is like a six, but it's not near capacity. 'Cause we got some ground running out there this year.
So, is the plan to abandon the one that's in the road and...
That would be up to you guys, but if we put a big enough tile in there, you would not need to go on the road or down the road.
Yeah.
'Cause that's an old tile, fellas.
I'm sure it is. Look, I have the fellow on this, so... Anybody in particular you want for an engineer?
I've requested, uh, Don, uh, Etler.
Atler?
Etler?
Yeah. Yeah. Adrian is really, really good the last time and it was, it was very professionally done.
Okay.
They are particular, a lot more particular than what goes on here.
The woman writes, "Look, this, you know, that's, that's there. Says it's a ten inch going up the road. Ranch five is a ten inch. And it's a fourteen on the main, southern east and west."
You're saying that tile is under, literally under the Hawaii Avenue?
Yeah. Yeah, it is. Yeah, 'cause they've had to dig it up before. It's under the road then. They dug into the road about two feet from the west side. And there it was.
Yeah, I know of another place that's in the shoulder of the road. Other roads that built over the end, we get there. Yep. That's the end of the road. That's a ten. This is a fourteen.
There's a ten south of it that crosses the road also. There's three...
And it says it's a fourteen here.
...mile across the road.
Fourteen.
Yeah, down here, guys. Corner there. Yeah, the relief stopped here or here.
And there, and then there's the other...
I think it's the, uh...
And then there's the one that goes up into our field.
This one here is also a ten.
Yep.
This is a fourteen there. Yeah, one extended up here and go up there. This is the one, this is partially in the road.
Yeah, this one up here, this is why.
So, David, are you, the one that goes like right on the edge of the road, is that the one that's getting extended?
No, we wanna replace...
Replace in our field, the main, the new main.
Which starts to the west a long ways, yeah.
So, the relief tile cleared to the west is a twenty inch.
Yeah, there's two of them. There's a pair of them.
So, is this all just replace existing?
Is it all additional to existing?
Yeah.
Then we'd be relocating it from the road to the field.
Making it slightly larger.
Yeah, because it's way overloaded. You know, you can look out there. There's three tiles going to the one, and that's only what crosses the road and what comes out of my field and Mom's field. And there's, and there's other stuff hooked into that also.
All right, all. What's that, Dave? My market size on that corner. Yeah, I, I, I...
Follow the...
What I, what I was looking at was...
Except for go up here.
A fourteen inch main, which I never even knew they made a fourteen inch. And, uh, then it goes to a ten up the road. Got twelve coming into it.
I believe so.
Yeah.
I don't think there's an extension that's called.
It's not coming down from there. Adding any length, it's just replacing it with their...
Getting a bigger, better tile out of the road. So, you're not asking to go any further than what's there. No, just improving what's there. And we're gonna stop right up there in the spot where that tile stops, where it crosses the road, comes out of the road. Okay, so just an improvement of the tile, existing tile, with better tile. And get it out of the road. You know, scenario is, if something happens, that tile out of the road, what are we gonna do? We are on this process. And it's what they're, to begin with, right now, when they still have that. Grounded out this year.
Yep. With the, as the preliminary engineering department, that's when you have it.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to accept your petition for improvement, and you would like, because those are two separate items.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Both. Petition accepted, and then hiring of the engineer.
And, um, petitioner has requested Don Etler. I'll make a motion. Where are they at, Spencer?
But he still lives in Algonia and he still works out of his house there.
Okay.
He is semi-retired now also.
Oh, Don's semi-retired? Okay.
Okay, we have first and a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Both. Engineer, I agree.
So, Dave, you said you'd consider looking at plastic also?
Yeah, 'cause this is not deep.
Yeah.
It's gonna be around thirty inches at the end of this.
Well, as fast as that, I wanted there when I liked the sounds of that.
Yeah, that was, that's a tremendous project. It's worked well.
Very good. Anything else on the E D seven sub two project?
Ready timeframe, how all this works. I, guys, I don't know any of that.
Spoke to, um, Don already?
Yes.
Okay. As soon as I get ahold of him and let him know that the petition, or, yeah, petition was accepted, he can start drawing up the engineering report.
Okay.
And when he submits us that report, we have to accept it. And then forty days after that is when we will have a hearing. So...
And then it's open to remonstration, second option, you know?
Well, that ain't a problem here, 'cause four or five people in this thing are for it.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
So, I'll contact him.
That's all right.
They each don't start through...
You're a little, a little cold one for it.
Did they, did they ride together? They might not be trying to... You want this back, Trish?
Anything else in drainage over there?
Anything, Trish?
So, we talked about, or, and we talked about the Giant Beaver Dam issue at Pioneer.
How about railroad deadline?
I haven't heard word.
That's what I figured.
Should we consider sending the railroad a, a letter about cleaning up the trees there?
Well, look, I will tell you that one of our contractors, Jason and Doug, A M or whatever they're contracting, they run into issues like a lot of us with the railroad working the right way. They at least found a supervisor or district guy, maintenance, that's been pretty decent to work with, that at least let them in and probably more so on private tiles and that, get in the right way to fix a tile or anything. So, I was gonna request those two maybe have a whole better connection of getting something done at least, 'cause it's just working the right way.
Yeah.
You know, so you're getting to work in the right way for that, 'cause we're not going, you don't go under the tracks. But this isn't an under the tracks deal.
Yeah.
So, maybe they would have the right person to visit with.
That might be...
Don't you think like we ever get the right... No, we don't get the right people. They live in county and drainage and railroads need it.
So, would that be, okay, that was the only thing I could think of, and that's only because Jason said for a year, they couldn't touch anything in the right way till they finally talked to the right person. And then he said, "You guys go ahead and it's just, we'll give you the permit, work in the right way, but don't go under the tracks." But maybe that's a good place to start. Maybe they got a hold of the right person. That's there. That'll make it. And then maybe there's something that can be cleaned up in there to take perfection.
Yeah.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion if you don't have anything else. Well, great.
For a second, any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Both. All are drinking.
I sure would.
Just because you guys are fortunate to have a good schedule.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, I know, you're on a tight schedule.
I appreciate it, dude.
I'm not sure about you, but...
Being a little geeky, so... Thanks, Trish.
Boy, you got a bunch of them. Wow. On my desk. That's my literal.
Anyone else wanna cup of coffee? Well, for me.
Ooh. It's good and warm.
Thank you for drinking out of all those French gosh cups.
Hey, yeah.
You were so kind enough to get them for us, Bruce.
Ben's having a drink.
Oh, it wasn't interesting.
Yeah. Did you have fun at, over more days, looking bad?
I didn't come out for it. I told the guys, I said, "If it gets too many people, if things are starting to get out of control, we're gonna call them. Come out."
I never heard a peep out of any of that.
The only thing I heard from the guys is they said it was very well run and they said it was pretty decently attended and they said no problems whatsoever.
Good.
Yeah, I talked to a couple people yesterday and they said the crowd was good. They had a few little incidents, but other than that, everything was good.
They still hired their own.
They didn't this time.
They had no...
They were fair down a little bit. This year just wasn't as big as it been in the past.
Well, and I told Will and I told the fire department too, that we were kind of short staffed, and they were gonna have to help us kind of patrol it and stuff, which sounds like they did, so...
Okay, yeah.
Well, we have Dean and Cory here to open sealed offers for the sale of the lease car.
Yep. Um, at least I got a new Dodge Charger and we're gonna sell this old vehicle. Hundred and forty-one thousand miles on it. Um, had a few little problems with it, but we got it fixed and everything, so we advertise in the local paper and, um, we got, we got eight sealed bids, so we're gonna...
All right.
What's the Dodge, Dean?
What's that?
What's that?
Two thousand and fifteen Dodge Charger. Yep. So, we're opening these up.
Awesome. We do have that early.
Yeah, you, you got your Dodge Charger.
All right, number one. Figured out how to open this thing up.
Gotta take that good open.
I think that's all right.
Can I have my glasses?
All right, here we go. Number one is from David Telford from Gilmore City. Two thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars. What was that? Two thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars. Number two.
About the E R.
Okay, Dean Westfall from Humboldt. Two thousand dollars. I don't like the way it opens.
Won't keep aiming that way.
Okay, number three from Chad Hansen from Humboldt.
H A N S E N?
S E N, yes.
Yeah.
Five thousand thirteen dollars. This is number four.
John Kellner.
Yep, John Kellner from Livermore. Two thousand six hundred thirty dollars. This one comes from the Chicago Motor Sales out of Chicago, Illinois. Uh, the bid is, uh, five thousand two hundred seven dollars. Five two zero seven.
You forgot one for us, Dave, I think.
I was asking if we have them for sale or...
You got some for taxiing, maybe?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, okay.
Here, there, for Humboldt. Okay, David Jones from Humboldt. Two thousand eight hundred dollars. Comes from Brad Strutzenberg. From Dakota City. Brad Strutzenberg, uh, three thousand five hundred fifty dollars. And our last one. Comes from, uh, U C F, um, Dabo, Dabo? D A B D A G H from Island Lake, Illinois. Um, this bid is four thousand seventy-five dollars. That's it.
So, my question on the Chicago Motors was, do they put in their, they're responsible to come and pick it up and all of that?
Yeah, they'll come and pick it up. Yeah, we're not, we're not transporting them. Well, I've said...
I know, but before we would say, um, we accept his bid, we have another one for five thousand thirteen. I didn't wanna... End up having to send one of our guys to meet him in Dubuque.
And he don't show up.
And he don't show up and...
Yep.
So, do we need a motion to accept that, Peggy?
Yes.
I would make a motion to accept bid number five to Chicago Motors for five thousand two oh seven.
I'll second that bid. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Both. That accepted to Chicago Motors.
So, hello, I'm, I'm just playing the devil's advocate. We tell them that we've accepted their offer and they have to...
Yeah, I'll phone them as soon as we get to the office and tell them we got a week to... Well, as long as they get my check, I don't care when they come to get it.
Why don't you hear either, but I just don't want them to...
Exactly right.
Yep, yeah, we'll tell them we got a couple weeks to come to get it.
Okay. Awesome. I think that worked out good, Dean.
Yeah, I think so.
Hopefully that was a better price doing it that way.
Yeah. More than I was thinking we'd get.
Well, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Kelly Blue Book on it was about seven to ninety-five.
Oh, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, that's not even two thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, that's how many two thousands it was. Not that old. Ten miles, but it's not that old.
Yeah, the police are like...
But it's had hard miles.
You know, and it's got stuff drilled and it has some cement in it and the, you know, the stuff, you know, center council and stuff, so it's not like, you know...
It's not pressing all of that.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, some of those miles were running hard, you know, so... Yep. So, that's it.
And a lot of idle...
And a lot of idle time, yeah. Good.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cory. Thanks, Dean.
Yep.
Good for Cory.
Yeah, I should go in and harbor initials and... I'm full of reason if I ever get a ride or something, I'll take this. I know this story was here.
Thank you, all right, Dean.
Yep.
All right, moving right along. Uh, authorization for chairman to sign a resolution approving the comprehensive solid waste management plan update for North Central Iowa Regional Solid Waste Agency.
All right, I'll explain this to you. This is basically a renewal type thing of the twenty-eight E agreement we have with the solid waste agency. Just, um, they're doing some research and they had a few, a few of the cities had not actually signed them and sent them back to our members. So, they just redid it, get it all out, make sure everybody signed it. So, basically updating them.
We all make a motion to authorize the chairman to sign a resolution on solid waste. Sorry. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Both.
Do you want to sign the copy that I have or...
Yeah, be fine.
Then, then you, they saw they've sent this to all entities and read their updated records.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight E's and whatnot.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, we, we had signed ours. There's a few out there that...
So, they just sent them back there for everybody?
Okay. And they updated it.
That happened.
It's only a hundred and seven page document if you wanna read it.
No, I mean, that's why I feel pretty comfortable about its technicality.
Yeah.
Okay, we need to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Quarterly Report. Orders have ended, uh, end of June of twenty-twelve. If you haven't got the copy of that, um...
Are you, the top one due?
Will you mail that to them, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Why would make that motion to accept, uh, Veterans Affairs Quarterly Report?
I'll second it. We're coming in about seven thousand hundred of your...
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Both.
It'd be nice if everybody did that.
Peggy, do you want to, Greg?
Yeah, probably.
Okay, yep, I can destroy yours for you. Oh, thank you.
There's no riots on them, so you don't need to, but, well...
Yeah, I didn't look at the county fifty-eight communities around the corner. We'll certainly get rid of it for you.
Okay, we got that accepted. Um, we can move on to committee reports at this point.
Believe I only had one this last week, and that was at the landfill on Monday evening. And that was just a closed session thing we had on employees, so, so I had...
Thursday, I was up here... Thursday, I was up here...
Just, can I back up just a minute? Was it the Humboldt County Land Hall or the...
No, it was North Central.
Thursday, Eric and I were up here at the courthouse and did three, um, interviews for the janitor, the permanent position. Full time, excuse me. Um, and as our email, Peggy has more set up for this evening. So then I guess hopefully we'll be able to come back to the board with Eric and I will put our heads together and see where we end up and then we'll come looking for a recommendation from you guys. And we'll give you a recommendation, I guess.
Did they go pretty well?
But it did. I mean, the, uh, probably longer than when you get to charity.
A little bit, and we thought we were pretty on time and then it dragged a little long on the, you know, because you have three, so every few minutes, but, you know, we got through them and, yeah, they did go well. I, I think we, thank you for your assistance and we kind of had our structured questions and then like the Nat led, uh, others. But it, everybody was, you know, asked the same general protocol questions and they went really well.
Good.
I mean, I denied one, I guess.
Well, Bruce was saying deny, he can suffer.
He was getting antsy, he was getting antsy.
But then we're gonna have a better go up at this evening, we'll start better later.
I hope so, because I gotta try to slide a church meeting and all that.
Okay, um, Wednesday the fifteenth, I had a CSS HR meeting over at Waterloo. Um, we've gotten a lot of candidates for our new CEO, um, that we're gonna be filling. Uh, I was, we were pleasantly surprised, we thought we'd be lucky if we got ten applications and we've got over a hundred.
Ooh!
But of that hundred, it was through indeed, so there's three words that they will send out, you know, resumes on that, so of that, there's probably fifty actually.
A lot.
But still, yeah, that's have, but we're looking for somebody that's definitely mental health, of course, or it, or social work, or, you know, that's one of our criteria, is they have to have a degree in that. Where a lot of them have a lot of business management, which we need that too, because it is a CEO, so, but it, they, I think we're gonna do really well, we've got a lot of meetings set up in the next, next four weeks as far as when we're gonna start, hopefully do interviews and we're gonna go through, um, Megan, who is the HR person, of course, the CSS is gonna narrow it down. She's gonna send us all the, have the actual qualifications, then we'll narrow it down to ten, then we're gonna narrow it down to five for actual, because if you get too many, that interview's gonna just get to be too much. But they're from all over, they're from...
Long ways away here.
Here in the South Carolina or North Carolina, that it would be amazing if we did, you know, I mean, on paper anyway, looks amazing.
Huh.
And, um, so if we could get, you know, if that really is a possibility, you know, like I told Megan, you don't live that far away, you gotta do phone interviews first, of course, to see, did you realize this is in Iowa?
Yeah, not Iowa, right, that's crazy.
You know, but a lot of them are looking for, you know, this is what they're looking for.
Yeah, they're looking for an opportunity there.
Right, exactly, so they, they may very well be willing to...
She's looking for a better one or not.
Oh, I know, because I'm thinking, because there was one in Carolinas, I can't remember, and I'm thinking, oh, do they know that Iowa, you better research Iowa. That's all I had left, this week will be...
Good luck with that.
Thank you. Yep, we're meeting today in Toronto also, public county, kind of me, I, I'm, yeah, so, we'll meet again today later. But, but that for you?
I didn't have anything official, I did have a couple of phone calls, one of them was appreciated and he says, uh, they must be spraying or leveling the roads out there, crack, crack filling and stuff like that. And he said, that's as smooth as that road has ever been, they're doing a sexually good job.
Good. Yes, I noticed that too, the crack filling is really...
We go, it's used to be, go down through there, blah, 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 and he said, it's just as smooth.
They're doing that, I'm taking the message from them was, uh, that overlayment thing.
Swearing.
Or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, West of Old today.
Yeah, they got a picture, he sent a picture here. Shows a picture of it running.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of like, um, new life to an old blocked off road.
Right, yeah.
Hopefully squeeze a few more years out of it.
If that's successful, making maybe go on more sooner.
Yeah.
A new life for old, you know, things, it kind of helps.
Maybe I'll lay underneath, maybe I'll lay underneath them, see if it works really well.
Newly and an old...
Exactly, yeah.
That's good. You have anything else, Peggy? Yeah, I, as Bruce, on this past Thursday, we had the custodial candidates for the interviews that evening, and we discussed that, uh, three more this evening. I guess in regards to that, uh, we'll get through these interviews and discuss amongst ourselves, let's say the first three went well, I think these will go well. Is it even possible to bring one or two candidates in front of the entire board if we need...
How do you, how do we, how do we proceed from there, I guess?
Would it even be a possibility, because obviously we wouldn't want it in a general session.
We do it in the work sessions, we've been...
Yeah, you have to have it open though, with...
Yeah, it's open.
...in press and they would have to agree to be open.
Yeah.
Well done.
We just didn't know how, yeah, we...
Or, or we can just, you know, these are the three we recommend, here's their resumes, and we look at them and decide.
Yeah.
We can go with that.
Yeah.
For what our interview recommendations are.
Yeah, go with your, right, interview recommendations and bring us two or three and then we'll look at their resumes and try to make a decision.
Is that fair?
I believe that's what we've done in Iowa.
Okay, well, that was one of my uses and my questions after last week, so...
Well, and when you, when they ask us, you know, we give them, is there anything you want to know? Well, how do, how do we proceed from here? Well, we, we think.
Well...
And when you say that, it kind of makes you, so...
Maybe I should have them around for a while, huh?
We just wanted to make sure we weren't putting our...
No, telling anything to...
Selfs up, when we weren't sure how it would go from here, so, we told them that we'd be back in touch with them before, at least the middle of next week, so...
Oh, well, then you're not gonna get anybody to work with Dave then, since he's at the end of July.
I know. But when we, like the earliest, we talked this morning and we don't interview until this afternoon, even if Eric and I got back together tomorrow morning to get back to the rest of the board, you're looking at Wednesday.
Yeah.
So...
At least it's Wednesday this week, not Wednesday.
I think, yeah, if someone is to start by, Wednesday and last day against, taking, at the end of July, last, okay, whatever Friday is.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, and I don't know how, did you ask for...
We asked the question for each one of them, when would you be able to start, and the number, the first one said, I'm gonna, I need two weeks to give my other per, uh, my other employer, well, we appreciate the fact they are looking to do that. Another one has at least a week, um, so I guess that's the fifty dollar question.
I heard, the first of August. If you get them hired, but you want to get them started, probably the third.
Can we, uh, ask Dave, I know he's officially done as far as being here at the end of the month, uh, if he'd be willing to, because I also came up on interviews, come and do a, a, maybe a couple walkthroughs, can't ask it?
Well, with, with hypers, he can't, don't with any of it.
That applies, kind of like things you've been checking out too with hypers, so he could not legally...
He can't answer a phone question, he can't come up, he can't...
Ain't that a crazy rule?
Otherwise he'd have a...
Like, that's how they got that. Well, that answers that, Bruce.
Well?
Let's say you have to go to the question before the thirty-first.
I guess the other side of the coin is, is then we have to go to each one of the heads of the offices and say, when would, when is the time that your offices get cleaned? Because if this person doesn't get to work with Dave, they can't visit with Dave, then...
What we can also do too, has not had this happen before, is if these people have vacation time, we could ask them, would you be willing to take a couple of days vacation?
Oh, to come in early.
And they come in and work with, you know, work with Dave, you know?
I was gonna suggest something like that, too, if they just don't know...
Or, or just come in the evening and have Dave walk through with them.
Yeah, yeah.
Before you retire.
I've done, I've done that.
Make the decision.
Thank you, yes.
But it might be not something to go through a whole day of kind of how it starts and, you know...
Yeah.
How it goes, just so that person would know, I mean, that would be my recommendation, and I would wish, I've done that a lot, and a lot of them will do that, they're willing to do that, to take a couple of days vacation to...
Well, you know, we looked at, uh, the day that Dave wrote out all that stuff and we, some days he comes in at six, well, he has, what, six different offices here that have to be cleaned pre, before the door opens, and we don't, I doubt if he drags the vacuum and the mop into the treasurer's office while they got people in there or in here, so most of that has to be done earlier. So that's part of the reason why...
With this, so is he, because he will not be working after July, but is he technically taking vacation then, to take, use up his vacation time basically in August? But is that considered he's done, that he's not still considered an employee, even though it's on vacation? If he would come in, he could, made me think of that when you said vacation for the...
But then if he comes in and works, then you're gonna have to pay him more money because he's working his vacation.
But what if he's not...
Pushing into the next month, we'll mess up.
What if he's not working, you know, and it's just out of the goodness of his heart, because he's taking more of a vacation day?
I think that's a very thin gray line.
Yeah.
Long day, you know, this, I'm not saying this...
I think it's better if we can do it while he's here.
Yeah, that'd be...
I think then we'll...
No gray areas.
Sandy, um, saying would be the prospective candidate.
I'm glad we, we made it to the head, pretty, when we were gonna do it.
Right.
So you said the person that would maybe be hired would take maybe a vacation day, come in and be still working.
Yeah.
And work with Dave.
Because you're not gonna get the benefits of, of Bill's assistance there either, just because...
No, he's gonna be gone too, yeah.
So it's not like you can say, okay, well, we're...
Kind of too bad they both retired at the same time.
Yeah. We may have to be getting back to us, everybody.
But there again, we could ask Bill to come in, because he's got a guy, we draw hypers.
That I don't know, I would have to ask him, he's probably been earning it, so...
Oh, really?
Be able to, yeah.
He's been earning it.
Yeah.
I didn't know that he would be, being he was part-time.
Yeah, and he knows he's gonna work extra hours.
Okay.
Are you gonna hire a part-time person too, or a tech man, or don't?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you may be in touch this week after tonight's interviews, to try to expedite this to get some...
You know, we can have a special meeting to get it done sooner, I'm more than willing to come in, I know Bruce, like, he wants my meeting, it hurts.
No, I don't have a problem with it, and if we can figure out, once we have these interviews tonight...
Yeah, we go to...
We, we talked the other night about if you rank one, two, three, and, and how we work...
Yeah.
The next other meetings, so, I mean, we know...
We're trying to get it. Yeah, something in place by then this week, otherwise we just don't have a good option for the, it's not really fair to any buddy thing, whatever, if they don't have a chance to get with Dave and...
Yeah.
Could still...
Why would we try to do that, get that done this week?
We're gonna make every attempt, our interviews tonight...
They gonna be around this week?
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Seriously, yeah.
That's why I sent those interviews up for Monday instead of Tuesday or Wednesday, because I knew we were running out of time.
Yeah.
Nope.
Well, yeah.
I guess we do what we do tonight and then we'll see where we're at tonight, if there's a strong...
Is there any thing that doesn't work for people?
There's... I have, um, CFR on Thursday night and I think it's Zoom, but...
Tuesday, maybe I have a meeting?
It isn't like I...
I won't be around Tuesday or Wednesday.
Is that, Dave?
I won't be around Tuesday or Wednesday.
And I probably, no, we don't have it now this month, we take...
But in all fairness, we miss one person...
Well, yeah, we've got four and we're fine.
You get three guys.
Three or four of us together, should we shoot for Wednesday?
Possibly.
Well, just to see, needs to...
I might be back Wednesday night.
Do it for...
I might be back Wednesday night.
Should we shoot for what time on Wednesday night? I'm, I'm pretty flexible.
I can, I have, Mason City, I have CSF in Mason City, and we're, I'll be, but I'll be back by five, because we're gonna do, we're gonna meet, do some things after the meeting to our HR, so, but I'll be back, I know, by five.
I'm, I'm, I can do any time Wednesday, I'm really flexible.
That guy that worked for left me off, I should be back by five thirty-five somewhere in there.
Can we get, see how our new goals this evening and say tentatively five thirty once evening?
Or is that gonna give you this time, do you want to...
I just have to tell him I gotta be back.
I'd, I'd like that by a little seven.
Five thirty. Then, we'll, we'll be flexible, but let's just say tentatively five thirty once evening.
All right, yeah.
All right, great.
Uh, so, the, wait, Dave, so I write that down?
Why are we getting towards the middle of the, almost the end of March?
There's a month already.
My gosh, isn't that crazy? This year, I mean, this year is just...
So the other question I have is, is then, do we have any more candidates for the part-time?
Yep, that's here, my stuff, talking about...
Okay, awesome.
Um, so, yeah, we have that, we got that covered, um, I got a nice thank you note from Kerry McCarthy, who is the DMA director, most, uh, thanking accounting for the opportunity, uh, as a position and look forward to working with all of us in the coming years. That's what Kerry wrote in his thank you note. That's all I have for committee, so, so, if we get that done.
Kerry, we're the, uh, part-aging Saturday, really, helping out, we, uh, have to have an ambulance down there, DMA people, and they fight about, and they're down there working, they're moving down there.
I see the fair also has some, uh, I don't know, horse shows, or horse, some of the four age kids, so they have an opportunity to have their horses down and...
They'll have, uh, all of these lines are part of four age, part of, will be this week, but they won't have that, I guess, I have a spot card on them, but...
Well, just to let you know.
Other than that, they'll have...
Okay, so we're going to have that, okay.
You'll need your...
Okay.
Stand up on the next one, if you need one.
Okay.
They say they have kids, children, and I remember hearing auction and all that, uh...
I was wondering on the auction, you know, with all these, uh...
I know what you're gonna say.
Small places, they're, they're...
These laughters, uh, joke salads.
September, October.
I wonder if they didn't have spots available for them, because they usually save them spots for those fairs.
But you buy a critter that don't have any place to go, you're still walking in the fairway and say, hey?
Borrowed inside.
You got any room for this guy?
I have one other, just quick thing, I heard from Don Reefer this morning, uh, in one of our protocols on weed control and the right of way this year, they will be hitting all of the hard surface roads starting today.
Oh, okay.
Keep them off the slurry up there.
Oh, they respect, any road code.
We don't want our go, go.
Yeah, no, they, they respect all that, but they are going to start that program today, it's, uh, mainly targeting giant rag weeds and any other noxious weeds. Giant rag weeds are not technically considered a noxious weed, but they are so...
They are obnoxious, so...
They're obnoxious, they are an obnoxious weed, and it seems like they've been on so many of the secondary roads with the control, they're getting better than the hard surface roads, so that was a switch up this year. So just if you, if someone says, what the heck are they doing, that's, that's, they're doing that part of the weed control program starting this week.
And I've seen a lot of farmers out with their little buggies spraying along there, so they are doing their part also to...
There's a lot of places, you just don't have...
Some are mowing their road ditches, yeah, too, a lot of that.
But they...
That's always nice.
Yeah, it is, yeah, so, you know, it's just, but that was what we came up with, because there's so many, and it seems to be on hard surface roads, they just didn't get the attention, so that, going this, this week, they'll have that, they'll be working on that.
Okay, great.
That it? That it?
Maybe you have some stuff?
Yes, I do. Um, received eleven, I think I put it in with the stuff on the table about the preliminary flood rate map. Um, they said they're gonna be doing a webinar to anyone who is interested. I did give a copy of this to Trish, 'cause I know she was working on some flood maps for you guys, I thought if you were interested, so check that out if you are. Going through the sheriff twenty-eighty agreements, um, looking for things that I needed to update. The sheriff agreements for the cities who did not vote in the law enforcement levy, who are just paying their contracts, those contracts were up. So that includes Gilmore, Hardy, Laverne, Addison, Rindwick, and Redland. So new contracts needed to be filled out, so I'll be sending those out today, I wanted you to know, in case any of those cities call you and say, "Why am I getting this?" It's another two-year contract with the current rate in it, um, the current rate's eleven dollars per capita, and it only goes till twenty-twenty-two, and I don't know if I brought that in, I think twenty-twenty-two is when everybody expires, so then we start over if I'm right.
So then, you'll have to write a new one up and...
Yep. So for now, this will get you through to twenty-twenty-two, um, if everybody signs and gets it back to them, we'll be that contract then.
Yeah.
So this year is the first year we will have no Pioneer in there, because they sent us, um, and I think you got a copy of this also about the hearing for the discontinuance of the city, so, um, they won't be paying into this sheriff contract anymore either.
And that probably hasn't been keeping us above water with the twenty...
Not really.
Fifty-five dollars?
Fifty-some dollars or whatever they send in.
I sent them a, a copy of the, well, the ones that had signed, or the ones that voted in the levy, got their new bill, and with the new bill was a, they always like to have something in writing that says, "What are you using this money for?" So back in two thousand fourteen, we had hired a new deputy, two thousand sixteen, the contracts went into effect, and so I showed what this deputy is making now, which is in the sixty thousand dollar range. These contracts bring in about thirty thousand, so the rest of it's paid by the county, and that doesn't include FICA, IFRS insurance, um, all those other things, so they are still getting the money.
Plus the vehicle that he drives and the...
Yeah.
And the gas and the... Thank you, Peggy, that keeps us out of trouble.
Yep. Should've had a mouth in June, but I was kinda just took over my life for a while, and I... You ever hit that?
How are, how are we doing here? Are we doing good enough? Have you had any issues out here in the halls with people sitting? If there's too many in the offices or...
No, it's been pretty good. Once in a while there will be when the sheriff or when the sheriff, when the treasurer gets busy, but normally there's not that many people. Now that we've been open for a while, you know, when we first opened, there was a lot of people in the hallway, and now that we've been open for a while...
Kinda got caught up.
They had to come and go, and, yeah, I think they got caught up a little bit, so...
Are we, are we back to license working in there?
Driver's license.
Driver's license, did the state open that up yet or...
I'm not sure where Pam, yeah, she was trying to get everything caught up, but I know that she was doing that by appointment, because there was so many backed up. I'm not sure whether I should have to ask Jenna on that one.
Good, thank you.
Yep. Um, other things, we were talking about the streetlights in Pioneer, um, Ben had brought up the idea that, you know, maybe some of the streetlights could be turned off, and how many streetlights are we paying for? So I called them in America and asked them, and they said, "We're paying for fourteen streetlights," and the fourteen streetlights cost us four months, a hundred and two dollars and forty-eight cents. So I don't know if there's any, if they are, um, seven dollars and twenty-eight cents a month for each one. And you've got all your...
Probably good. I know Ben, he's already identified the ones that he doesn't wanna...
And I'll let Ben know this too, or unless one of you wants to talk to him, but I thought I should let you know first.
Okay, well, I gotta talk to Ben, I'll put that on the list.
Okay, yeah, tell him there's fourteen lights in Pioneer.
A hundred and two.
One oh two forty-eight was what the charge was for this one. I thought there were, um, we have our homeowners, we're gonna buy some of those and take that over, I, did we have that one?
We did. Mm-hmm. I think Ben's got that figured out.
Yeah.
Which ones are gonna be there?
That's my thought, but I can't remember exactly who's got that. Yeah, some of them, probably like it, some.
But that'd be probably pretty hard to do, 'cause they're not on their meter.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
That's true. I also put on the table a bunch of these right of reduction certificates, apparently this company has sent multiple copies of, uh, some properties, so, you know, I looked those over. Those are there. Um, then we're down to some of the LEC stuff. Eric, what I have is that agreement that we discussed...
Yep.
On Monday, and then this is what Dean sent me, and I sent him a notice back, and I said, "Is that this? Is that something else?" Or I was assertive, but you know what? I'm confused either.
This is something else, I believe. Be pretty easy to find out what was...
Yeah, I'll talk about that, UTV then too.
It looks almost like a maintenance agreement, but I wasn't sure.
It looks like a maintenance agreement, and...
We already own it, so...
Yeah.
We just transferred.
Yeah, but I imagine we gotta transfer funds from one account to the others.
Well, he would.
Yeah.
Maybe he's gonna, I mean, let's get something off.
Yeah, that's where I have to find out.
I'm sure part of that new system.
'Cause it would be a good, is there...
What the heck, they could always...
Not really.
Unless he says no, you don't want to start, Dave.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If, if it was a decent...
It's like everything else, it's all this dang meeting. This is a new maintenance agreement on, maintenance agreement on the new system. But if you want me to verify, double check, I, in fact, I might, if you get done, I might just see if I wanna call in Dave, and I'll make sure that's...
And then this, this is the motion of that board, so you can have that.
That is a service agreement, I'm sure, right?
And then you can let me know on this...
Oh, yeah.
There for the LEC.
Amazed with all the service agreements people, we get.
Yeah, the equipment has to be covered.
Yeah.
Do you guys for tonight need copies of, um, the...
I have, I think you have.
Or do you have them? I thought I did the whole thing.
I need you to get it back, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well...
And then I almost locked this off, Peggy.
Oh, did you? Just about?
And that went down, and my water bill was empty, so I walked down to get water. I pushed that button, and that thing shoots about three foot in the air. So I'm chasing the water, and he went to the bathroom while everybody was gone, so the door went shut.
Oh, then you could...
And I'm thinking, when it hit, and I'm thinking, we just locked ourselves off, the light's on, his... And Jerry comes up and he goes, "I got the key." I said, "Good, 'cause I'm not sure where mine is." Oh, mercy.
Oh, it's a no sign, but that, all that was, the discussion at the LEC meeting, that was an amendment, the change orders and everything.
Yeah, that was...
And so it doesn't affect anything moving forward, it just shows, it gets the final dollar amount where it's supposed to be, and it shows that we signed off on it, and we said, "No sign."
Yeah.
So how do we, can you send out a, make it completely official to the LEC members so that I can sign it?
Okay.
I guess we, you wanna, that was, said, "No sign it," 'cause we wanted more information, which I have.
I don't know if you talked, did you see your email from Sharice? When she saw our meeting from last week, where we said, you know, we all take turns being chairman, and, and she sent us minutes for the nine-one-one meeting, so we can at least have some knowledge of what's going on in there, so...
Copy, copy of everything, it's done.
Yeah, so, but that was, at least somebody's listening to what we're requesting anyway. That was nice.
Can I just, well, you have the lease thing.
Yep.
Can I send you the other, which is just basically a project sign-off that it's completed? 'Cause it is tough and running.
Do you want me to send that when I send the stuff?
Yeah, yeah, I'll send you everything, but, I mean, it would be the same, getting like a motion from the LEC board that chairman can sign these documents, so that they can get them signed, and you can get them sent back in to Dave to go along. But those are things that, it's just that, um, so anyway, yeah, I've got those two things, and I'll, I'll send you those too.
Okay.
This is all, this is all LEC, I think we confirmed that at our last LEC meeting, so I want everybody with the details there. Anything else?
After the hearing.
You got a question?
Uh, how long will the restaurant be closed?
Probably for a little while at least.
There isn't a lot upstairs, it's open, right?
No, that's the same way.